Good evening. I call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Hampton Board of Select and the Board of Health being held in the Town House Auditorium, June 17th, 2024. This meeting will be conducted in person remotely using video conversing technology. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is anyone recording the meeting other than us? There ain't no one. Do we have any minutes tonight?
No.
No. All right. EV charging station update.
Jerry Olivetti is on Zoom.
Yeah, let him in.
Yeah, hi, gentlemen.
Hi.
Ladies and ladies and gentlemen. Yeah, so do you guys, you want a general, you want a general update or do you guys have some questions for me? How do you want to?
I see you dug a hole. I see you dug a hole today. Are you going to fill it in after?
Yeah, where's our first check?
Yeah.
And I did want to ask about what is the, what is the process now about charging a fee? And how do we set that up? Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah. So what's going to happen is once the, once the chargers are installed and, and, and all the connections are, are done, the software vendor is going to, there'll be an onboarding where they will gather a bunch of information from, from you, setting up, you know, the account where the revenues are going to go to. And so essentially they'll create an account for you. They will, you know, walk you through a demo of the software to explain all the capabilities of the software. And one of those is pricing. And so, you know, you have the ability to, you know, set multiple price levels, what they call tiered pricing. So you can, you know, charge the public one price, you can charge, you know, town employees another price, you could charge, you know, that, you know, you can, you can customize the pricing to different users. You'll have the ability to set idle fee pricing. For example, one of the, you know, when, when a car pulls up to the charger, charges their car, and then their session is finished, the software will send the driver a text informing them that their car is full and that they should come and move their car. To the extent that that car is not moved, you can set a idle fee. In other words, you know, you know, they get maybe five minutes for free. And then after that five minutes, you can set whatever penalty you see fit. For example, every 10 minutes that goes by, you can charge them $10. You can charge them $20, you know. I always recommend to customers to make those idle fees thing, so to speak. Because, and, and if they're going to continue to take up that space, then, then you're obviously entitled to get compensated for that since, since nobody else can come in and, and utilize the charger.
Jerry, I don't know. I don't have an electric car. What's the typical charge that you see around here for, you're pulling up in an IONIQ, you're plugging in. What's that charge?
In terms of the cents per KWH?
Well, that wouldn't, I mean, when I'm done, how much is the typical, you know, how much am I paying to charge a car?
Right. So for a, so there, one of the things the software vendor will work through with you and what, and, and one of parts of the analysis that, analysis that they will do for you is what, and I'll be involved in this as well, is we, you know, you look at the general area and you see what type of charging infrastructure is available. And these are going to be fast chargers. So we're going to want to pay attention to what type of fast chargers are in the area. And you look at things like, okay, and then you look and see what those other chargers are charging per KWH, whether it's 45 cents, whether it's 50 cents, whether it's 70 cents. And there, you know, in addition to that, you look at other factors, you know, the, the convenience factor. There, there are a number of other things that come into play where that you can utilize to, to perhaps justify a higher cents per KWH. But to, a, a short answer is, you know, you're probably going to be looking at charging anywhere between 45 cents per KWH and 55 cents per, per KWH. That's kind of a general rule of thumb with these DC fast chargers.
Right. So what would the typical bill be? I pull a car up there. How much are you charging my credit card? It's kind of my question.
Well, you know, that-
Obviously it matters like how, you know, what, what's the level of discharge at this point?
Yeah. Let's say you're charging, you know, you know, there's a lot of different factors that will determine the end, the, the, the bill. And it's no different than a gas car. You know, if you're pulling up to a, a gas pump with a quarter tank full, then that's, the, the end cost is going to be different than somebody pulling up that's topping off with three quarters full. It's the same with an EV. All, you know, different EVs have different sized batteries. They're going to be pulling up, you know, with different, you know, capacities left on their battery. But using my car as an example, I have a Tesla Model 3, you know, my, my battery, you know, is roughly 80 KW. And if I come in with, let's say I get down to 20%.
Thirty bucks.
Let's, what's my, my, come on.
Ten gallons.
Sixteen.
If I'm not mistaken, the level three-
It's gonna-
Charge up to like 80% faster than the last 20% slower.
So, yeah, so, yeah, that's a, that's a good point. But let me just, let me say it's 40. So you could, you're looking at roughly, if I charged, if I charged half my battery, if I went from 50 to 100%, I'm going to be paying roughly about $18 for a half a tank. And what happens is like the other gentleman was just alluding to, it's like, it's like when you, when you come into a, think of the electricity coming into the battery as they get, as the batteries get closer to, to 100% capacity, the charging time slows down. Think of it like a, a big empty parking lot. When you put, when you pull into a big empty parking lot, you, you park immediately. So, you know, it's the same thing with, with electricity. When electricity is entering the battery and it's down at like 20%, there's plenty of, there's plenty of spots for that electricity to go and they find their spots real, real quick. As you get closer to full capacity, think of the parking lot as being 99% full and you're driving around looking for that one, one or, that one or two empty parking spot. It's the same thing with the electricity. The electricity travels around in the battery looking for places to go. So typically what happens is as you get closer to full capacity, the charging time slows down a little bit.
Take parking in the wallet Christmas.
Yeah, exactly. So, but you're still looking at, you know, going from 20 to 80% you're at, with, with these chargers, you're looking at, on average, probably anywhere between 20 minutes to a half an hour. Very fast.
So I, I pull up, I have my debit card or credit card and it bills me and the money goes where?
So, so what, what happens is when you, when, when the driver pays their, their, their fee for charging, that revenue is going to go, the, the software vendor will set up a, will set up an account on your behalf, on the town of Hampton's behalf. And that, and, and that's, and those funds accumulate. And then on a monthly or quarterly basis, you have, you know, those funds accumulate and you, and then on a monthly or quarterly basis, those funds are dispersed to your local bank account for you.
What percentage does a software vendor take?
So the way, the way that, the way that they're compensated, it's a, it's a pay as you go fee and it's, it, they, they take five cents per KWH. So, so if the chargers are being used, you, you know, you, you pay. If the chargers are not being used, you don't pay.
So there's no, there's no payment to, I mean, who owns the equipment?
You own the equipment.
All right.
The town of Hampton owns the equipment.
Who repairs the equipment?
The town repairs the equipment. Yeah.
Is there a warranty?
Yes, there's a five-year parts-only warranty that, that is included.
So if you're estimating, you know, say $25 per average car, so we might see three cars a day, five cars a day. Obviously this can be used anytime, somebody can pull in on a Sunday, charge up.
Yeah.
Doesn't, nothing to do with the center being open.
Correct.
But you have no sense, I mean, it's not like where Big Y scans the area and said, okay, I potentially have this many customers, this is where I'm going to buy. There was no assessment basically of the potential revenue based on cars in the area ahead of time. So we don't know, you know, there was no study saying, you know, we saw the average, we saw 30 electric cars go by every four hours. So therefore, we might see two or three stop in. We don't have a sense of that, right?
No.
I think the only sense we have is there's not many level three chargers in the area.
Yeah.
People are driving, it's going to be displayed on their infographic of where certain chargers are. And ours will be listed as a level three charger. So people might go out of their way by a couple of minutes to get to a fast charge rather than going to, say, Big Y with, you know, level two charger.
Right.
So there, the potential is there for, for increased-
I can't think of, the only other one I think Bob said, maybe JCC had a level three?
There's, there's not many-
Great Horse, Great Horse has twos up there.
Great Horse has got two.
Twos, yeah, only twos.
Yeah, there's, there's not many level threes in the area. And, you know, and, and the drivers will find them. They'll show up on their apps. And, you know, a, a lot of these apps are built into the cars now, you know, and they show up. And your area is such a robust area for, for a number of outdoors, outdoor type activities. And believe me, you know, the, the cars will find them as will, and I think this is a big one that I don't think is being paid much attention to. We're doing a, a tremendous amount of fleet electrification, especially last mile delivery electric vehicle vans for a lot of mid to small size distribution companies. And those, those vans, though, like the Ford Sprinters and whatnot, are, are gonna, you know, when they're doing deliveries in the area, they're going to know where those fast chargers are. And they're going to be swinging by there to refuel. And, you know, I would imagine quite, quite consistently in addition to, you know, the, 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 the regular EV cars.
So you said the, the, the usual charge is 45 to 55 cents a kilowatt hour.
Yeah.
What's the margin?
The margin is whatever you pay for electricity relative to what you charge.
Okay.
Minus that five cents. So if you're paying 15 cents per KWH and you charge 50, your margin's 35 minus the five. So that's 30 cents per, per kilowatt hour.
Okay. Municipal rate.
When is this going to be operational?
Lower rate.
Um, we should, yeah, I was talking to my project manager today. We should have this wrapped up and ready for the chargers to be installed in, in a week. And so is, you know, as soon as those are, the chargers can be delivered. And I, I won't have that information for the next couple of days, but it, it shouldn't be long.
So that gets back in Don, your question about billing and stuff. It sounds like we should have this in place for July 1st then because we could potentially get in revenue, you know, right at the start of the fiscal year.
We're going to need a new account for this.
Should we set up an enterprise fund, you know, to pay for the maintenance and-
Then we'll only be able to spend on things relevant to it.
Yeah, the, the thing about the maintenance, the, the beauty about these OTEL chargers is they're, they're, they're 120 kilowatts. So they disperse 60 kilowatts of DC power in each port. So the, and the, the significance of that is these are air-cooled. That's important because it eliminate, you know, liquid cooled chargers require a substantial amount more maintenance and there's a lot more that can go wrong. The, the beauty about these OTELs is, you know, they're, they're, they're very low maintenance, you know, just like a, you know, you know, all that's typically required is, you know, there's a couple of filters that need to be changed once a year or, or once every two years. And, you know, the, and then, you know, you inspect, they come with cable management systems. In other words, when, when you take, there's a retractor that, that, that controls the cable. When you pull it out and then when the driver's done, it, it retracts the, the cable back in and creates a nice clean, you know, operation of the, the nozzle, if you will, that goes into the car to disperse the electricity. So the, what's, what's, what's nice about the software is the software and the vendor are, they are going to be, you know, they have a monitoring system for all their chargers. So the software is going to be able to deter, if there is an issue with the, with the charger, it will, not only will it be, it will tell you whether it's the hardware or the software. And in all likelihood, it, it will know that there is an issue well before either you do or, or a driver does.
Okay, these are powered. Is there an electric bill that, for running these or?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good question. Yeah. So there'll be a, this is a new service. The, the service is dedicated to the EV chargers. So there will be, there will be a bill specifically dedicated to the EV chargers by National Grid.
And that's why I think we need a revolving fund is we could pay that electric bill out of a revolving fund with the revenue that's deposited. In other words, we need to appropriate money at Tommy.
Yeah. You said it's air-cooled. Does it make noise? Is there a fan that makes noise?
They're very quiet. I, I don't, I have, in, in all my times of charging, I have not, I have not heard the charger operate.
You said that there's, they, they are powered. So they're, they will generate their own bill. What kind of power do they draw when they're not in operation? Like, is it like running an air conditioner or is it like running, you know, LED light bulb?
Um, that's a good question. I don't know, but I can get, I'll get you that answer.
Did one ever catch on fire? I got the fire chief here. Did one ever catch on fire?
I've never seen, I have, I have personally never seen one catch on fire. And we have thousands upon thousands of ports installed.
Yeah, go ahead.
Who do you have that fixes these? Is it a factory technician that's trained to work on these? And how far away are they located? How hard is it to get someone to come out and work on them?
Yep. We're trained to work on them. Where, you know, we're, we're down and we have electricians, we have 30 electricians throughout the state of Rhode Island and Massachusetts. So, you know, we're, we're more than capable. And also between the hardware and the software vendors, you know, we're more than capable to, you know, to, assuming that, that, you know, if it requires a new part, you know, that's probably going to be the bottleneck in terms of getting something fixed. As far as, but, you know, for, you know, our experiences with not only these fast chargers, but also the level two chargers, the slower chargers, a majority of the issues that come up are able to be solved via, you know, either, either, you know, a software fix.
Mr. Chair, I think we should authorize creation of a revolving fund for the purpose of expending and receiving money for the charging station. We can do that in any time in between town meetings.
Yeah, it'll just be subject to ratification at town meeting.
Ending ratification at town meeting?
Yeah.
Right, so. You know, for the set of capo, I really have no sense. So I'd say 10,000, I mean, which is probably way high. Unfortunately, it's way high.
Yeah.
I wish it was not.
Maybe we'll get a lot of-
Could be. So I mean, just to throw a number on it.
Second.
All in favor?
And then perhaps the town minister could search other towns. I mean, I don't know what the current rate is we're paying. So the differential sounds like it's the key part right there. What do we think is a fair markup?
They're going through Zangarfa or not?
Wouldn't qualify for Zangarfa because we already have the four things lined up under that.
Right, I was just wondering, on top of it, is, is that going to be incorporated, incorporated into that?
Well, I've been saying for a while, we need to bring them back in and do a PPA. But I mean, if he can find out what the current, because like, the fire station is not part of the power purchase agreement. So whatever their rate is, would be the rate we would be paying. And then what does the board feel is the appropriate markup at that point? I mean, I, I think Jerry, if you said it was 15 plus five and we're going to make 20 on top, nothing says it's not charged and set in stone. If we don't think it's right, we change it later. I think by basic Google-
Idle fee, for sure.
As well. But a basic Google shows that 40 cents to 45 cents is right in line with a level three charger.
As long as we're matching it with level three chargers because those are going to be more.
Good. 45 cents is it for now?
Yeah, I mean, if that's, well, if he comes back, we don't know what are-
You're going to let us know, right? We can change it. We can.
Okay. Assuming his numbers.
Figure it out.
Yeah.
All right, Jerry. Thank you very much.
And who can I, who should I, should I send the answer to that question in terms of how much these things, how, how much power these things draw when idle? Should I, I'll send it over to you, Brian?
Yep, that'd be fine.
And then you, then you can forward it. Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. And if, you're welcome. Thank you, gentlemen and, and ladies. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Stick with that.
I think it was you, Lauren. It was just you.
Stick with that. He's going to lose his job. Firefighter cadet program. Didn't bring them all. Where are they? I think the town administrator has some comments.
Yeah, I forwarded them along to Nick. And Nick and I had a discussion about them. I don't know. Do you want to just explain the, the program a little bit?
Yeah, so I think it was two months ago, we came and seek permission just to start this up. I know you guys had some questions. I know the biggest one, one of you guys asked was their insurance. I called the company that we use for town insurance and I know Lauren also emailed them. And the guy, Chris, confirmed to be on the phone that both for, if they get hurt, we cover the same way as if me and the chief were to get hurt and also with bodily damage. So if someone throws a tool through a window or something, that's covered because there's no age limitation there. So that's all covered in that sense.
Is that Chris at Berry Insurance?
Yes, that was Chris. Some other good points. So I know one of the questions that was brought up by Brian was if, is a complete volunteer position was talking to the chief, would just be paid the same as a call member would. So would it be basically this equivalent of a call member? So paid minimum-
Minimum wage.
Yeah, for a missionary.
So would they be paid for train, when they do their training, the company?
It would be set up as, as a stipend, as a same, as a stipend.
Is there a minimum age requirement that we?
Yeah, it would be 16 years.
So 16, so.
Or 16.
Now, I also, I used, now you've, have you talked to the school about it?
I was waiting just to get the final permission from you guys, but I do have-
Because I said you had to get the principal's approval.
Yeah, so.
Is it a work permit thing or something at a certain age?
It's 15.
Is it 15?
That would be my next step, bringing up the school, figure it way till the school is done. So preparing up with them, and the connection through this will go from there. We did have someone offer to help reach out through the school that works at the school. The only other information I got from the insurance company is they just want me notified when it gets up and running. But you want to emphasize there's no increase in the premium at all.
He didn't confirm that?
Yep, he said no increase in the premium.
And the, the two cost items that I talked about was the department would be purchasing PPE for the cadets as needed or cycle through.
Right now, we have a lot of the older gear, obviously, since they're not going into a burning building, the stuff that might have, that have a hole in it that we can't bring in for a normal guy, they can easily fill into that. So maybe this is all minor costs, maybe some shields for the helmet, just identify them differently and other minor stuff like that. Nothing like, you're not going to be getting a whole brand new set of turnout gear.
So our turnout gear ages out at 10 years. So we feel like it can be down, generally used stuff. They're not going into live fires or burning. So they don't have to need that required protective for live fire. So.
Well, they would have restrictions on what they can and can't do being cadets.
Yep. Almost the same as a probationary.
And what are you looking at for numbers? What, what is your goal for enrollment?
I think according to the rules and regulations, they give a couple, a couple months though. You get, it's set up as a maximum of 10. I always talk to some people, I, you know, I was talking to Brian today. I don't think we're going to have 10 people right off. It's not going to be like we're going to have 10 people right off the gate coming. We're going to have to fill the roster. I think it's going to be a gradual thing where we get this up and running, say, beginning this summer, maybe hopefully three, four, and as it builds on.
But you are going to have a hard cap?
Yep.
So these are supplemental people, basically like the senior guys you have now that can't do certain things. We have a couple of the ones we've signed off that, you have Chuck, I think Peter maybe as well.
Peter, yep.
Yeah. So these are, these will be support because they can't go into frontline.
Right, correct. So basically we're trying to, hopefully younger people might, will have, be able to take advantage of them for a longer period of time. We always get younger college people or people are interested in the fire service. We'll let them know, you know, one is if they think this is a career platform. Not everybody wants to go to college. It gives them opportunity at pretty much no cost to, to do so. And hopefully, you know, once we get to them at an earlier age, hey, you know, you know, Craig or John or Don, want to join me? You know, this is cool, you know, try it out.
Well, I think we need to speak to the youngest person in the room here, Nick. Is this something that would have been attractive to you when you were younger?
I said, going back, I started at 14 down in Enfield. I saw her heading in because I am second generation firefighter. But I did have, I, exactly as the chief said, I got two friends that joined with me right away from high school. Other people I know as well, where I'm a call member in Shaker Pines right now. We still have a roster of cadets. So, and that was, I was a cadet 12 years ago and there's still programs that are being successful. So it shows the longevity. And even going further back, I know people in my father's generation started off that way as well at 16, 14 years old. And they're still involved 30 years later. So it does have a high success rate in that sense. And sorry, like the chief said, you know, starting at 16, get them involved and show them the training and stuff like that. The goal is also hopefully when they, turnaround for us is when they turn 18, they're able to go to the call academy. They have all the prior knowledge and stuff, if they choose to go to the call academy, but they're probably have no problem with it and pass. And then, as the chief said, even with us, there's local colleges. So we get that young person in here at 16. If they decide to go to Western New England for something else, maybe not fire, you're still getting a four years off someone that now is a certified firefighter and already knows the apartment and it out.
What you're saying is a good way to build interest. And I was always talking in the state, how there's a shortage of emergency responders and stuff. So just hopefully it gets people interested earlier, like, and continue on, you know, career pathway.
One difference from a regular firefighter is, I know for residency, you have Hampton or Wolverham. But in the regular, don't we have a mile limit for firefighters?
Three miles to town line.
Right. So just back to next point here, say somebody signs up, they live on the other side of Boston Road. So they qualify for cadet, but then when they want to become a firefighter, they're now too far away.
Yeah.
So there's no-
I think we'll take one step at a time and see if this-
Should it be the same thing I'm saying rather than?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, the further out we go.
You throw the net wider. I got it. So I'm trying to catch more.
Yes. And, and, you know, the, you know, obviously with the distance comes traveled, you know, time. So a lot, you know, we'd like to get the people closer, obviously, keep the, the call quicker response times.
No, I only looked at that because it wasn't, so to speak, the same as your regular policy there.
Right. Now it's not. But I mean, that's, that's- Right, now it's not, but, I mean, that's, that's something that might have to be visited down the road, I'm not gonna, it's not gonna be a problem, yeah.
So I think we all agree that we're supporter of the program. Meet with Brian to work out the issues that he has to changes. We'll go from there. Right?
Thank you, thank you.
Your next step would be what, to talk to superintendent?
Yeah, if you guys are gonna give us a green light, the next step, I'll do a reach out to the school, hopefully.
I don't see, I think the conversation that Brian and Nick have had are easy things to be fixed, I don't see why Nick can't reach out right now and tell him it's happening.
Put it on his radar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Nick.
Cell tower lease. Does anyone know what that's about?
The tower, it's dumb.
Yeah, I know.
Nice.
Brian can break it down.
I can break it down if you want.
Go ahead.
So the last time we had this, we had a discussion about this, there was a request that the, the town's public safety antennas on additional towers owned by SBA or SBA subsidiaries, that the town would be charged no rent for those, for those attachments, for those antennas. So we asked town council to go and have a conversation with SBA, which she did, and the language, so she had this conversations, the language that she got back in the document didn't match up with what she thought the conversation was. So what she's asking today, tonight, is that the board have a discussion about whether the 35, so the 35% increase is meant to sort of net out the payments to those two SBA subsidiaries. So they would increase 35%, a 35% increase in the rent on the lease that we're renewing now. And the real issue there was, is SBA didn't include the CPA escalator in the base rent. So what town council was asking for was a 35% increase in rent to net out the payments, plus, and retaining the CPI escalator, which is what SBA did not have in there.
So she's recommending that we accept a one-time payment of 35% increase, but there needs to be a CPI escalator, which was omitted for some reason?
Right.
Or counteroffer. What does, what does the counteroffer include? I mean, we actually don't know what the actual count, the actual offer is, other than the 35% increase.
Right, it would be whatever the town wanted, whatever, whatever the board wanted to suggest, suggest.
So is the goal here, or what she's saying here, is that when this is all said and done, the extra money will offset what we're paying for the other rental?
Yep.
Fine. That was kind of our goal, I think.
This was the goal, but here's my concern, if we're voluntarily allowing them to raise the rate that we charge, are they then going to in turn charge us more for other aspects?
What do you mean, like, could they go back and increase the charge at the other thing and also not net out anymore?
Right.
Can we write that in the agreement?
I think that's something that we should work, agenda rose.
Yeah, cause don't wanna say, oh yeah, we're gonna do this, and then have them say six months down the road, oh hey, you know, inflation.
The other one went up.
The other one went up now, so, just wanna protect.
Are you saying you don't trust them?
I don't trust anybody.
So a 35% increase to net it out, including the CPI escalator?
Right, right.
And ensuring that there were no increases on the other, the other payments that would eat away at that 35% CPI, basically, okay.
Good, good.
That was easy.
Right back on schedule.
Highway paving contract.
Good evening. Can you get all the cobblestones, new plan he has, it's gonna be kind of Roman roads.
I like it. Cobblestone will slow people down.
Yeah, no kidding. That's what we need to do. Like being in Nantucket all.
I'm in favor, so move.
Thanks for sending it, by the way.
I've got, I think Craig, between you and I, we have half the stones he needs, too.
I know, that's fair.
All right, what are we doing here?
Last week, I expressed my interest to Brian about possibly renewing our paving contract with Precise Paving this year. In our bid documents, in our invitation to bid documents, it is stated that if both parties agree, we can renew up to, say, two more, two more years. You get the original year, for a total, potentially, three years. So I've reached out to the owner of Precise, and got some, some numbers from him on what, what escalation could look like for asphalt or botanamous concrete related products. So he sent me over some numbers. He did agree, so this is where I get, this is where I wanted to, Brian, and to the board about. He did agree to hold his prices, however, since these paving companies do not control, or have any control over the price index on liquid asphalt, diesel, gasoline, and stuff like that. He would hold his prices from last year, however, we would have to pay, like, say, at the end of the paving season, or once the projects are completed, we'd have to pay an escalation cost, cost. Which we would have to, which we would have to do anyways, cause during the middle of the paving project, if prices went up, even though we're under contract, we still have to pay an escalation, escalation cost for, for the liquid, for the liquid asphalt-related products, so. All his other items, milling, and there's a couple other items, you know, he's gonna hold from, from last year. So, in the past, I've, I've renewed contracts for lesser amount of money in the best interest of the town. But since we're talking about, you know, a little bit more money this year, with the, with the extra state funding and stuff like that, I just wanna make sure I had the support of the board.
And this is the former, you said the premier, but there was a former, they took over Lane, or they took over?
No, Precise, Precise Paving, they're a small company out of Brimfield, and, you know, and for what it's worth, I did.
Is the one you had the question about the distance?
No.
What was the one you had the question about the distance?
That was Northeast Paving, they're out in Grand, and, you know, we've made a couple trips to them. That was for the pickup and the plant. And we've made a couple trips, and it's, it's been okay.
It's gonna be okay?
It's gonna be, I think.
These are the people that did work for us last year, then?
Correct, the end of last year, and then.
And how do you feel like their work was?
I feel, I feel like their work was excellent. I, I did receive several calls from residents on the streets that they worked. Giving high praises to their professionalism, their efficient, efficiency, stuff like that, so that was, that was nice.
Did they do North Road?
They did, they did a section of North Road, yes.
Isaac Broadway and stuff, right, just listed back.
They did lower, I thought it went by Isaac Bradley, it looked in very good shape.
Yeah.
Yep.
Hillside, Highland.
They're a small company, they've been very easy to work with, and, you know, and the other thing is, he's looking to, if we, you know, if we do end up renewing the contract, you know, he's looking to get in, as soon as I can get Nash, I'm sorry, EverSource to finish the, the gas services on the road. He's looking to, he's looking to come in as soon as possible and start getting some work done in town, I'm hoping by the end of summer, but that kind of hinges. I mean, we'll have probably the majority of our work done by the end of summer, however, Mill Road, that.
Well, you mentioned, you mentioned they're a small company, and we're gonna give them a lot of work. Obviously, with the extra Chapter 90 money going to a lot of towns, is there a danger that these small companies could be overwhelmed with jobs, or?
I think there, there could be, but I don't get the sense that he's going to be.
He's gonna be overbidding, or?
I don't, I don't get that sense.
He wants to lock in his schedule.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
I mean, you're the subject matter expert, if you're comfortable with renewing the contract, I mean, I'd rather not step on your toes there, if you're the one that's dealing with them on a day-in, day-out basis.
Right, but I just, you know, and I just didn't wanna overstep my bounds, or whatever, I just make sure this was, was out there. I did do some quick numbers, and it, and it looks like, based on the, the updated prices that, that he gave me compared to the prices from last year, it looks like that we, the escalation would be a little over 20,000, which isn't, which is a quote. Now, if we were to go out to bid, you know, I'm hearing prices anywhere from 125 dollars a ton to up and over 130 dollars.
Wow.
So we've got him for either 119 a ton, and then, of course, the escalation, or if we pay on the spot, it would be 124. And then there was other prices for the milling, he was gonna hold the same, TAC code, with a 50 cent increase, and items like that. So I, I feel pretty comfortable with.
And he's already a good working relationship there, so.
As I said, they've been excellent to work with, and.
Oh, I know, it's just back when you first came in, the first contract you brought in, we were in the 80, 80 dollar range, 70, 80 dollar range.
It's amazing how, well, just.
Six, seven years ago.
Just an idea of how much we've gone up since last year at this time. So last July, we, liquid asphalt per ton was a 625. This year, they haven't come out with the June numbers yet, but May it was 665, so it's creeping back up.
5% in a month, yeah.
So.
All right. So are you looking, Don's looking for a motion to authorize execution?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I agree with Craig that we have, I think, all the confidence in you that, you know, in the future, do we think, Mark, can just bring this to Brian for, if he needs a quick approval? Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't, no.
And again, if it happens on a Friday.
It's good for transparency.
Sure.
Yeah.
But I mean, happens on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, call him at home, let him know right away.
That's when we do contracts usually.
If a catch basin's falling in, you wanna show it to him, he'll be right down to look at it.
We'll measure the depth of the pavement they put down.
Yeah, don't you have, don't you have basins somewhere kicking around, you know, you go Plan A and Plan B?
Plan A and Plan B.
Yeah, when you were doing the roads, you had the sewer grates, you had different styles, you were.
Oh, yeah.
That was a while, I guess.
Too confusing. So that was it, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Laughing Brook.
You staying for the bridge?
Uh, no.
You should.
What time is that at?
Next.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Do you want me to?
Laughing, just sit there. Laughing Brook, Laughing Brook Bridge MVP. This is your, this is kind of your thing.
It is, Ken, and that's why I wanted Mark to stay, cause, I don't know, I'll get a quick update. Brian, how much are we in the hole before the end of the fiscal year?
For the, contributing to the bridge?
For the MVP program.
And, and money that was spent but not appropriated?
Well, yeah, we had a grant for the state hasn't reimbursed us for yet. I know you've submitted.
We'll get full reimbursement from the state for the MVP program, but there's a $50,000 match. There was.
In the match, we were gonna use.
Casino.
The casino, but Casino said no, no.
Right, there was 35,000, well, there was around another 70,000, but 35,000 of that was, was supposed to come from a covert municipal replacement assistance grant, which somehow got coded to general revenue, so that money's really in stabilization likely, if you washed free cash.
So it's there, just not in the right spot?
Yeah, it got coded, I don't, it got miscoded and moved somewhere else. And then there was like another six grand, I think, to authorize the submission of one of the MVP grants.
What do we need to ask for at a fall town meeting?
To net that out.
Yeah.
So I mean, well, we owe the 50, and then 110, around 115, 120, probably.
That hasn't been reimbursed yet, you mean?
That's not including anything that will be reimbursed.
The 115 won't be reimbursed, that's what we owe out of pocket.
Yeah.
And then the rest, the rest of the overage will be covered from reimbursement.
Yeah, I submitted, I submitted already for 191,000 in reimbursement, and there'll be like another 40 probably left, I think, in the MVP to reimburse.
We mentioned the.
When that project closes.
You mentioned the 50 that we were expecting Casino to cover. They said no, because it's not on the route, even though they would cover the two traffic signals on the same route, makes no sense, but.
Yeah.
Casino revenues are way down, I think it probably weighs into it.
And the legislature wants to take.
They want that money.
The legislature wants the money.
Yeah, exactly. So 50 plus the 35 that got miscoded, you said?
50 plus the, the, really, the, there was like 64,000, there was $64,000 charge that was charged against the MVP grant account. 35,000 of that was supposed to be paid for with a covert municipal, a covert grant from Department of Ecological Restoration, which the town's received that money, it's just.
It was.
What was the other 30,000 for?
Was that billing from HG8, Howard Stein Hudson or whatever?
Yeah.
It was really billed from them?
Yeah. Where's the other 35 coming from? I, I couldn't track that, I couldn't find out.
Well, just out of curiosity, I'm just thinking out loud, all of our bills from the engineer, do they total out to that loss you're talking about?
Yeah, the only charges, the only charges to that account are from Howard Stein Hudson, so if we get the MVP reimbursement back 100%, then that's gonna be the deficit, estimate, that's gonna be the deficit in the account. But we can identify why those charges were incurred, and in what amount.
So are they overbilling us, that we know of?
No, it's my opinion that, that we incurred expenses, we, we signed contracts for items that we didn't have appropriations for.
Okay.
So we have 50,000 for the bridge, if we choose to do that, and then we have 35,000 that just misappropri, is miscoded. And there's another 30,000.
Of expenses.
Of expenses, yeah.
30,000 of expenses.
I think the 50 is not, if we do, we're obligated for, cause that was part of the 50 plus 30 in kind part, so we need to come up with 50 somewhere.
Right, I'm just trying to get a total here. 30,000, 30,000 is what?
Well, there was another, let's call it, let's call it 65,000 of expenses.
What was that last fiscal year, so that's pretty much water over the bridge?
These are all char.
Well, you mentioned, you mentioned if it rolled into free cash, I think that's unfortunately, we're not gonna get, if you think that got brought into general fund, swept into free cash, it's probably.
Gone now.
Right, it's a number we need to be aware of, but it's not something we need to reimburse, cause it got covered up in the free cash part, reconciled.
That's the revenue that got.
Yeah.
That's the revenue that should have been applied to offset expenses in the grant account.
But again, it sounds like it was almost in the free cash recap at that point, so the one that's gonna hurt us in this fiscal year is the 50,000.
Right.
We'll still be a deficit, right?
Yep.
Above the 50,000, so we need to cover more of that.
Well, where he's assuming, he's hoping that the state is gonna send the check.
No.
No, no, what's the deficit?
Total, in the account?
Yeah.
I'd have to pull that up exactly. You want me to pull that up?
You said roughly like 115?
That's where, that's where I think it'll land. But that's assuming we get the reimbursement back.
I understand that, but you're saying that you think the 35 went into the general fund?
Of revenue, yep.
Okay, but if it's not, and if that happened in this fiscal year, currently, you can just have it recoded back out. If the books haven't been closed, and it's inside this FY24, there's no reason you can't have that 35 back with a bookkeeping change.
I, I believe it, I believe it was one, uh, two fiscal years ago.
Okay, then that's not part of your 115.
Right.
So your 115 is the 50,000 matching.
He's just saying that that 30,000, that, the 115 total includes a 30,000 that was misappropriated a couple of years ago.
Right, but it's not part of our debt right now?
Yes.
No, he's saying.
Expenses.
It's part, it's part of our expenses, it's, we're still owing that money somewhere, for that account.
So that carried over the fiscal year? Cause they sounded, if it got reimbursed inside FY23, why is that still open? inside FY twenty-three, why is that still open?
I think that, cause that project has kept getting rolled over, right?
I thought it was the earlier grant that got closed out. So we're funding the fifty, if you look at the fifty, which we hoped was gonna be Casino reimbursement. We did agree the town was gonna kick in the fifty as part of our match and thirty in, in kind. So I just don't see another funding source for it, knowing how the books are running right now, other than the big A at this point.
Pulling stabilization.
In the fall, where we're hopefully, usually trying to push in.
Yep.
Yeah. But again, we do have capacity to use a slight amount of ARPA to close some of these things.
How much do we owe?
Total.
And this count, and this stuff, do we make, do we owe?
Total, total.
No, no, we don't, we don't, we benefit still.
Right.
Isn't on that sheet you just got, Don, is there something at the end there? That last page usually, uh, grant stuff? MVP listed there?
No.
That account adjustments.
Maybe it's on a special revenue one, yeah.
The other question is the, the bridge condition, John?
Well, that, yeah, that's been my concern. I mean, we've been rolling down this road based on vulnerability and the consultant-
You have a cookie?
Yeah, I have a cookie. Mark, okay. The consultant's made a case that it's important to provide more capacity for the brook underneath the bridge so that flooding doesn't happen, like it did in two thousand and five and in nineteen fifty-five, only which I was here, one of which I was here for.
Was your fault?
Jake, myself, thank you. Um, and my point before is if they were, we saw the budget, I think, in the three to four million range on the last, one of the last meetings.
I think so.
I know they've thrown out, well, you can apply for a tip, you can do this, do that. I'm just not convinced in my mind that there's an overarching need to replace the bridge for a once every fifty, fifty-year occurrence, when I think Mark has also made the point that a repair of the bridge would also accomplish the safety concern part for a lot less than four million dollars. And you've shared that, yes, the state was concerned about the outer two beams, and that's why you've marked them off. And they can be replaced and repaired for less than a million?
Can Mark do the bridge? Can Mark do the bridge?
No, but I mean, we can get that work done for a lot less, the repairing the bridge than replacing the bridge. And I'm just not convinced that the replacing of the bridge is one of the top priorities for that kinda money from the town, when especially we don't have, we're going down this road with no grant in our pocket. And pretty soon we're gonna be so far down that we put a notice to the state, hey, we're doing the bridge. They're like, okay, you got two years to do it. Well, we don't have a grant yet, too bad, get going. And it'd be more comfortable, I'd like to get, suggest that we get a repair cost that would alleviate DOT's concerns as to the status of the bridge as it stands right now.
I don't believe the engineer ever looked into repair, right? He went straight to the replacement, right?
Right. You've had, where they came to you-
Did for Rockadundy too. I mean, that seems to be the-
Well, they backed up on Rockadundy. I mean, there was more cons- cons-, you know, discussion of repair on Rockadundy, with swales, et cetera. But I just think, I think it's time to pull on the reins on this project a bit. Don, you've made, we have so many things in front of us, and without a guaranteed funding source, I worry that we're gonna obligate ourselves to something that's gonna hamstring us down the road. And I don't see, I'm just not convinced that the need is there for repl- replacement. If DOT had sent us a letter like they did for Ballard Brook, like they did for Rockadundy, oh my gosh, you have to replace this bridge? Sure, but they haven't. And they have no qualms about writing letters.
Isn't the MVP thing though also trying to look at climate change and saying, we're gonna have bigger storms and more water and that's the issue for flooding?
I think that's, that's a, a decent part of, of what they're trying to do is prepare for, you know, uh, more frequent, maybe more heavy events.
Mm-hmm.
But going back to what, you know, to what John said, um, replacing that bridge altogether for that kinda money isn't gonna stop what's happening downstream, which contributes just as much to any flooding that happens on Main Street, to my, to my knowledge.
Is that East Brick, East Brook, it goes under there?
Yes. And it'll just dump right, it just dumps right into-
It gets, I mean, it doesn't do anything at River Park? Nothing at all? It's just the same waters behind River Park?
It's a joint effort with Mass Autobahn, which, you know, is, is great to be partners with a, with an organization like that in town. Uh, I, I've got my, I've got my doubts about the whole, about the whole thing too.
We gotta, we've, this funding now from the state, they spent a half million dollars between the first grant, which was shared with Islamado, I believe-
Yeah.
And this one here. And we haven't got a spade in the ground yet. Heck, we had the last meeting, we talked about the, oh, what about the scenic, uh, water line? What water line? The water line, that goes by the bridge.
You're, you're, you're an engineer and research all things-
That's gonna need another engineering study, of course it would. So, thank goodness, like you said, Don, I mean, some of it's our money, of course, the state money is our money, and there's a potential that we might have to kick some in. But I don't wanna get down to where we potentially have to kick in all our money.
So what do we need? Do we need to look at what a repair would be, just a repair?
So I did reach out to, uh, somebody at Northern Construction. They, they assisted us with Mill Road, uh, Bridge, they do a lot of bridge organs. Um, he, he was though kinda hesitant on kinda giving me any numbers. He's not a, they're, he's not an engineer, they do, they do the work based on an engineered plan or, or whatever. So, um, we kinda lost touch. Uh, I still wanna meet with him and talk with him, um, just to get a ball, just to get a ballpark. But I think the next step would be, and I don't know, I don't, I wouldn't even know if this is out of line or what, but we do have a set of plans from Howard Stein and Hut- Hudson. Maybe have those plans reviewed and transferred into more of a repair or a, uh, rehabilitation by a different engineering firm. Because then what would have to happen too is we'd have to get permission or, uh, yeah, permission from Mass DOT Bridge Division to, uh, a chapter eighty-five, which would be any kinda alteration to, to the bridge, which has to be prepared by-
Right, but we did a repair of Summers Road a number of years back, where they had to lift the bridge, weld some extra outriggers on it, and drop it back down again. Obviously, some firm did that. The history here, you put the barrels along the side, okay?
Yeah.
Based on a letter from the state?
Yes.
Right. So obviously the state is aware of some type of deteriorating condition to it. They did not mandate a replacement. They wanna bribe, back up to a passing condition. Do they have resources to go back to them and say, okay, we're willing to explore that? Who could we reach out to to get somebody that would meet your approval?
I would imagine they do, and I could look into that.
They have forty people on that team's call, they must have somebody.
But that's, you know, and that's the problem with some of these state-funded programs and, you know, they, they're going to push the four million dollar option for this bridge, or they're gonna push the, what was it on Rockadundy, with the sidewalks and with everything else. Um, whereas, kinda takes the town's freedom away to-
Mm-hmm.
To repair as they see fit, or as we see fit.
Here's my other question, Mark. You put the barrels up because DOT told you to. When they told you that, did they tell you, you can put them up there, but we need a solution by X date?
No.
So theoretically, you could leave the barrels up and you're good, which is not where we wanna go.
Right.
But they didn't put, here's a drop dead, you must do something.
Drop dead or threatening letters or anything like that. Um, and, and honestly, I didn't, kinda knowing this MVP was, I didn't know how that was gonna kinda pan out, so I didn't reach out to them and look for options or anything like that. So, uh, I can do that, yeah. I mean, get a starting point anyways and, and, um, I just, I agree.
I'd, I'd like the board to authorize Mark to look into Plan B repair. Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
How much do we owe?
So, you want the long answer, the short answer?
Reader's Digest.
Okay. So, the short answer is, uh, one hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars.
Assuming reimbursement.
That is assuming reimbursement.
And if we don't get reimbursed before the June thirtieth, that would go against free cash of the extra money to be recapped the following year.
Like last year.
Yeah. There is a pending reimbursement, not included in this, not included in the one twenty-eight, four hundred. There's a pending reimbursement of one hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. At the close of the year, that will leave us a balance on the grant to seek reimbursement of thirty-four thousand, six, ten. But, but because we closed the book so early, it's questionable whether we're gonna get that back.
Well, let's, let's wait to close the books.
Well, the closing the books thing, I mean, that's just for, I thought monetary, I mean, it has to be dated before June thirtieth to actually count against it, doesn't it?
No. We can, we can, we can, uh, we could, we have a, a period of time where we can collect revenue from FY twenty-four.
July fifteenth is later, right?
I think it's even later than that.
I know fifteenth has been a date in the past, yeah.
Uh, July fifteenth is a drop dead date for, uh, uh, reserve fund transfers, in, in likely line, uh, might also be line of transfers. But in terms of when we can accept reimbursement for, for FY twenty-four expenses, I think it might be as late as September.
Is the thirty-four thousand, six, ten in the one twenty-eight?
No. The one twenty-eight-
Stands alone.
It stands alone. That's sixty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars, consisting of five invoices to Pedristein Hudson for Hamden Main Street over East Brook Bridge project. That was, that sixty-four thousand, nine hundred was supposed to be, was supposed to receive the thirty-five thousand dollar grant from Department of Ecological Restoration.
Okay.
But what happens, that again?
That went into general revenue.
Okay. Oh, that was the miscoded one.
So we have to, we have to pay the sixty-four, nine hundred dollar bill?
It's been paid, but it's a deficit in the grant account.
Okay.
But in the, that was paid in FY twenty-three or twenty-four?
Um, it was definitely not twenty-four. So it, it was, it was a prior fiscal year, but it's coming out of a grant account, which doesn't have the, but if your point is, did the revenue get washed through? Yeah.
So that, there's no chance of recapturing that, okay?
Correct.
Right.
And so then that leaves another sixty-four thousand roughly, that's the fifty thousand plus the six thousand.
So I would, believe it or not, the six, the, the six thousand was the recent one. So there was, there was a thirteen thousand, five hundred for writing the FY twenty-four MVP grant project.
So we have a hundred and twenty-eight we need to account for.
We need to come up with a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Bottom line.
What?
Bottom line, a hundred and twenty-eight we need to be.
Yep.
Which?
Question my, it's a couple pennies, but-
Well, which fifty is not a surprise, but now our funding source changed, so, okay, yeah. Have they agreed to our in kind, which was the thirty, thirty-two?
That's been all set, right? In kind is set for the MVP.
There may be one more month to submit.
Okay. I, yeah, I think we may be over anyways. Too bad they won't subtract it from cash. And so, so there was also charged to this account, the MVP account, invoices for the Summers Road Crosswalk, uh, project, the RR, which is rapid-
Hold it. He, he charged that to the Casino, cause we saw it in the recap.
It was, so these were charged to the MVP account for eleven thousand, four, seventy, seven, fifty, which I've since asked him to move.
To Casino?
To Casino.
Okay, yeah.
Well, it creates a deficit in that account of, that we had about twenty, uh, we had about two thousand dollars and some change left in that account that we didn't-
Was there a second, was there a second Howard Stein charged that? Because I saw one, he had the senior crossing plus Howard Stein, Main Street crossing, we didn't use Howard Stein for them, and then the mobile sign.
This one says Summers, the, the project title was Summers Road Crosswalk.
Right, but that was already on the, that was in there before. Now, it, again? Could mean it was, each crosswalk was about fifteen, sixteen thousand or twenty thousand, probably twenty?
Sixteen plus eight or nine.
Right. And then the mobile thing was actually cheaper than that, Greg, right? It was only under twenty.
Yeah. But I-
I think in the-
I'm sorry, uh, but I do recall HSH did do a, did do a design, uh, they did the, the handicap accessible entry-
Yeah, they did Summers Road, right. And I was saying, there's a charge again for it, it was already charged against that account. I don't know why it would go again, so-
Tomorrow and double-
Yeah, look at it, because I mean, for a hundred thousand, we had the mobile sign, two crosswalks, and Howard Stein.
Right.
Should not be over-
Right.
For that money.
It wasn't over, it was, we, we had twenty grand left when Bob was here and then.
Right. So even if you had that eleven thousand bill, we'd have enough for it.
At least that's the number I remember it was.
Right. Cause we were talking about funding the North Road Crossing out of what was left.
Right.
And we haven't done that yet, so.
That was out of the twenty-one. Casino mitigation grant?
Yeah.
I have that one too.
A hundred.
Don, I gotta tell you, next week is a financial recap, we need the full hour, I think.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do next week.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks for sticking around.
Jared, how's it going, mate?
I don't know if, we haven't seen you before, but your guys did a great job prepping up for Memorial Day, I have to say. Even though we didn't have it outside, the place looked great.
Long Metal, Cal Manager, playing that Mast EP.
Yeah, what happened?
Mast EP, uh, wanted different conditions at the IMAs, they're going back to the drawing board on that.
Okay.
Good, we won't want to get it done this year. I think next year is probably better.
Yeah, October.
October, they won't give us the money. You know, do what we say and we'll give you money, all right. Pretty much what it is.
Okay, Hamden Wolverham Regional School District lease, tomorrow we're going to meet with the Hamden Wolverham Regional School District.
Is there a dress code, Don? I wasn't, you, you've been there more than I.
No, they were shorts, they were, it's a very informal group.
Brian, come along.
Your own roll tomorrow?
Your own rolls, yeah. Are we bringing the tractors?
Yes.
You are, Craig, right?
I, you hop in the bucket.
Oh, thanks. Right, you wanna join the fun?
Yeah, sure. We'll go on.
Anyhow, that's what we're gonna talk about.
Okay, what's, are we out of five-thirty for the first one?
Five-thirty.
Okay.
Five-thirties?
Cable TV agreement.
Disagreement.
You were just full of them today, I gotta tell you.
I have reached out to the, the, that was recommended to us by our surrounding towns and by our town council of, uh, Epstein and Augustus, um, and I wanted to hear back from them.
So we've officially let Mr. Solomon go?
Yeah, unless the board feels differently, but-
Did he submit, uh, any invoices for payments that we can review billable hours?
No, I haven't received anything, no.
Okay. And we, we did authorize funding for that from, do we reuse an ARPA for that? Or was-
No, it's always long claims.
Long claims.
Long claims, yeah.
There's long claims. I just wanna make sure that, you know, if there's any billable hours, we see tangible, something tangible should return at least.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so I mean, if he doesn't wanna bill us because he has nothing tangible, then that's fine too, so.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, I, I mean, initially there was, there was a short-term extension, but other than that, I, that's about-
That was, that was a boilerplate extension, though. It was really nothing to that. I'm sure it was just a copy and paste on his Word document.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I- Yeah, and I, and I actually.
Yeah, you, you actually wrote more than we needed, yes.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll accept your bill too.
You love your cables.
Don's bill and then the other bill.
All right. I have two one-day liquor licenses for our friends at the Senior Center.
Does wine left over still?
Yeah.
For Thursday, June 27th from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. This is a
Interactive learning through art.
Active learning through art. Okay, and the other one.
What time will art be there?
The other day, the other one is July 20th from 5:30 to 9:00 PM. And that's for a one-day permit for a dinner dance.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I, I'm busy.
Dinner dance. And what else we got? We have selectmen reports.
Kind of a hit and a miss at the planning board meeting last week. Don, you were there as well for the actual public hearing part. One was continued and then they dealt with Mr. Casilius and the the lot from the 1800s. And you stayed for the battery part, et cetera.
They're going to put, they're going to have a public hearing. Well, it's going to be a public here for August 14th. So they could meet the 65-day thing, but it may be continued to later depending on what their, what their business is. So what else you got to do?
Uh, yeah, Fiber Optic Committee held their input session last week. Very good turnout. Not as many people as we'd like, but definitely enough people showed up to give us some good input and committee's going to take that back and try to get some answers and put together some more info. Also posted on the town website today was information about the heat wave we have coming up. We have cooling centers that are going to be open. Senior Center will be open Tuesday, Thursday and Friday from 8:30 till 3:30. If anybody is seeking relief in the heat and humidity in off-hours, the police station's available as an add-on, add as needed basis. So you just call in a dispatcher and somebody can go hang out with you.
Planning board again, the planning board, the battery storage and the select board selecting August 14th. And the planning, the master plan committee is holding their first public forum, even as we speak at Bethlehem Church. There'll be at least one other one, plus there'll be a townwide survey.
Condition space. Nice.
In the condition space.
We could have our meeting an hour before there.
How's the townwide survey plan to go out?
Excuse me?
How, how does, did they plan doing the townwide survey?
They're going, they're going to do it online and they're going to mail it to, to, they're going to get the mailing list and mail it to everybody.
73 cents, okay.
They're getting 137,000 bucks.
No, no, we have to mail it back. Brian, I think.
Administration report.
And then the Zoom operator, Brian?
Couple things. I'll start with that. I was going to end with that, but all right.
Since you asked.
Zoom operators.
Well, only because, you know, I had to be here for the planning board one. We're kind of like.
Oh, hold it. Before we do that, Brian, we have, we have we have some employees who would like to, according to the employee handbook, they could roll over a certain amount of vacation time and they'd like to do that. So I'd like approval to roll over for the building inspector one week.
Separately or just one?
I was wondering if we're still able, as I still, yes, okay. So the building inspector has one week, the senior center director is asking for three days. And the administrative assistant to the board of selectmen is asking for four days to be rolled over.
Four days?
Was it four days vacation and two personal or was it just?
Well, no, she's going to use the personal days. That's a whole other story.
Okay. Typically on these, we put a, a date down, it'd be used by September 30th or something.
Well, don't we, did we do January 1st?
Some towns do, but I think we, especially when they got four or five weeks already. I think we got to really cut it to the first quarter.
Okay, go ahead.
Don, is there one more?
I thought there were Jane. Didn't Jane have something?
Karen, Building Department.
I have, I have.
Wendell.
Wendell mentioned Karen.
I have Becky. I have Lauren. Is there somebody else?
Does he mention Karen on that one?
Karen's mentioned on the building one, I think that together.
What? Oh, yes, I see here. Three days for the building inspector's administrative assistant.
I move to approve all requests for vacation carryover to be used by September 30th.
Requested last week. Are we adding her on there?
Is it up to, to approve all requests up to one week for carryover to be used by September 30th? In the first quarter, basically. Three months.
Three months.
Any further discussion? Anyone else want to get in on it?
I just moved that, yeah.
Second.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right.
Wasn't listening.
Huh?
What?
Have a cookie.
That's two no's.
What? Don, I'm staying.
All in favor? Did you understand that?
Uh, Warren wrote it down.
Yeah, enough.
Lauren wrote it down.
Here.
We'll read the minutes later.
We'll just change however way you want. That's what you do anyhow. All right. Where are we now? Town Administrator Report.
Zoom operators. We've had two interviews. These seem promising candidates. We have one more to go on Thursday. And then after that, I think we'll move forward and try to get, get some people locked in so John can have his evenings back. The water commissioners through their engineers' time bond have submitted the permit to modify the system for phase one and phase two. They're doing it all at once in terms of getting through the permitting process with Mast EP, but we'll still need to figure out how we're going to, how we're going to fund phase two at least. And how we're going to put those out to bid. See, there's a planning board, there's going to be a vacancy.
Sorry, Brian, I'm going to go back for one second. When do we expect to hear back about the grants submitting submission for that? I know Time Bond submitted the paperwork for those one stops.
I'll have to double check, but I feel like it was end of July, early August.
So we should know.
For the one stops.
Sometime midsummer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Vacancy on the planning board. So if there are interested residents that would like to join the planning board, please reach out. They can email me or talk to any one of the, the board of select members in for, claim them in the right direction. Or they could email planning@hamdenma.gov. They can talk to Joanne. We'll be posting more information about that position on the website hopefully tomorrow. We're going to close out the master plan grant. The town had a $75,000 community compact grant. We have the final invoice from the consultant and we will submit for reimbursement so we can get that back.
I'm sorry, you had the final invoice and they're just still holding meetings? It seemed like we should be not paying the final invoice until after a little more.
For the grant.
For the grant.
The grant part, not?
It's the grant part.
Yeah, sorry, for the grant part.
Okay.
Then there's the town funded. Um, that allows to close that out and get reimbursement in a timely, timely fashion. Okay, mentioned the cooling centers.
Where are we with cemetery?
About it.
I noticed they haven't posted a meeting yet since the election. I mean, are they?
I think Dwayne's away. I, we see you.
Did everybody get sworn in?
Almost every morning.
Did everybody get sworn in?
Um, I could double check.
So who's in almost every morning?
I believe.
No luck on a clerk yet? Any luck with the extra hour? I saw the recap from Joanne. And she was going to reach out to somebody in the town hall about taking, helping with the extra hours. Do you know if that worked out?
I don't believe there's been any takers yet. That's all I have.
Anything else to come before the board?
Motion to turn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.